Good morning. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Danielle McCray, the councilwoman representing the 2nd District and Chair of the committee. In attendance, we have Councilman James Torrance of the 7th District, a member of the committee, and also Councilwoman Odette Ramos from the 14th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. From the council, actually from the mayor's office, we have Nina Themelis today, and from the council president's office, we have Preston Lewis. And also in attendance, we have Trey Hayes, staff to the committee. Before we get started, please take a moment to turn off or silence your cell phones. Today, the committee is going to be holding hearings on LO-22-0027 Quarterly Legislative Oversight Hearing, Department of Transportation, LO-22-0019 Quarterly Legislative Oversight Hearing, Department of Public Works, and 22-0136, our informational hearing status of the Baltimore City Municipal Identification Card Program. We have also been joined by committee member Mark Conway with the 4th District Councilman Mark Conway with 4th District. So, we're going to get started with LO-22-0027. We're going to hear from representatives from the Department of Transportation, then we're going to have an opportunity for committee members to ask any questions. You guys have a presentation? Great.
We do. We're a short one, though.
Okay.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair and honorable committee members. My name is Corinne Johnson. I'm the Director for the Baltimore City Department of Transportation. Glad to be here with you today. I've got a pretty good representation of our DOT team here with us today. Liam Davis, Legislative Affairs Manager, Tavon Braxton, Deputy Director for Operations, Erica Luckett, the Acting HR Chief, Stu Sirota, interim Planning, Deputy Director for Planning, Clea Baumhofer, Engineering Supervisor and Complete Streets Manager, Will Haynes, Traffic Chief, Adam Cloud, Right-of-Way Chief, BMO Devcota, Tech Chief, and Tish Gardner, Deputy Director for Administration, as well as other representatives from DOT. So, we will keep this very short today. Going into the agenda, well, actually, I just said on the introductions, but we'll quickly touch on the 90-day Sprint, resurfacing staffing, CTP tour, grants, and our snow preparation, and then open it for any questions. So, for our 90-day sprint, Mayor Brandon Scott's effort that's currently underway, DOT's goal was to, or is to, tow 900 abandoned vehicles, as well as install 90 speed humps. Thus far, we have towed over 400 vehicles, and we have actually met our goal and will continue to exceed that goal with currently 100-plus speed humps installed. Resurfacing is also fully underway. The construction season is scheduled to end mid-November, but depending on favorable weather, we'll see how that plays out. Some of the notable projects that we've completed in '23 include portions of St. Lo Drive, Windsor Mill Road, Madison Avenue, West Preston Street, Brooklyn Avenue, and Boston Street, among many others. As of October 3rd, we've completed 32.1 lane miles. We have 7.1 under construction, and then there's still some kind of remaining work to be done. Resurfacing progress is available publicly on DOT's website. You can click on the yellow circle that's there that says "Resurfacing Projects," and it'll take you to our page where we have an interactive map, GIS map, where you can pull that up, or PDF, to learn more. Staffing has been a strong focus for the agency. We have been prioritizing key positions and using a robust social media campaign and outreach trying to get viable candidates. Some of these positions are Traffic Investigator II, Signs and Markings Supervisor, Signs and Markings Graphic Art Supervisor, and in looking at ways of doing some strategic reorganization and setting up the agency for the needs in the future, we've made some changes to the Planning Division. So, instead of the Planning Division being all-encompassing for anything that's in that area, we've broken that out to be planning and bike-focused, and then there's the Transportation Services Team. And so, that team will be all of our Charm City Circulator, transit-type projects, micro-mobility, water taxi, and all those different areas. That position, that Transportation Services Chief, will also serve as Baltimore City's Red Line Coordinator in working in direct collaboration with M.MTA on this major project for the city. We have been working to make significant progress on our CDL vacancies, and in fact, for our towing division, we are fully staffed for all of our CDL positions. So, recently, on October 23rd, we held the Consolidated Transportation Program, the CTP Tour. This was hosted in partnership with Baltimore City Administration. DOT hosted it, and this was in fact our first CTP Tour to occur during the Moore-Miller Administration. The CTP was very heavily attended, and for everyone's awareness, it is available online, directly on Charm TV's Citizen Hub YouTube page, if anyone would like to go back and watch that. We continue to pursue various grants to both supplement, significantly supplement the funding that we have, and deliver more projects. And so, this is to both hit on our programmatic and capital project enhancements. Recently, USDOT just awarded DOT a fiscal year 23 Safe Streets for All, or SS4A, demonstration grant at $9.9 million. This was in fact the largest award from USDOT. Additionally, there's the Radaki Avenue Bomb Bill Project, which was funded during the 2021 legislative session, and this is wrapping up construction. And for anyone who's not aware, the Safe Streets for All program is geared at helping communities plan and design safer streets, which is a key element of USDOT's National Rowie Safety Strategy to combat the crisis of deaths on our nation's road as part of the department's vision of zero roadway deaths through a safe system approach. And of course, we are transitioning, we're here in the fall, but we know winter is on its way. DOT has been throughout the year, in fact, preparing for our winter preparedness. And so, we have 15,000 tons of salt already stored up in our facilities, prepared for winter. The city has 294 pieces of snow removal equipment, and we also utilize our contractor forces. And so, with that, we anticipate an additional 300 pieces of equipment. But it's not just about that. We have a lot of other efforts, tracking devices, and IT that supports our program. All city snow vehicles are equipped with vehicle-tracking devices made by Navman Wireless, and so we use this through a web-based tracking program to track our vehicles and see their locations in real time. Additionally, the bike lane plows, these Alto's Zero Turn Track mowers are equipped with snow plow and salt spreader attachments. These are multi-purpose units so that they are able to remove the equipment from the winter timeframe and use it as a grass mower deck. And these smaller type units make them ideal for plowing city bike lanes. And also, it's not just about DOT. This is a citywide effort through multiple agencies. And so, we have personnel from DPW, Wrexham Park, General Services, Office of Emergency Management, BPD, Fire, BSIT, Health and Housing, all collaboratively working to ensure the city's success during our winter operations. We have bi-weekly meetings and agency-level discussions to proactively plan for the normal events, as well as worst-case scenarios. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. We're going to get right into some questions. My first question is going to be regarding the 90-day sprint. Is there any type of track, and maybe this is for Director Themelis, or anybody can answer it. Is there any type of tracker or data dashboard for the 90-day sprint?
Yes, there is a dashboard for that, for the citywide sprint. I don't have the exact link memorized, but we could provide that to you all.
The second question is going to be regarding the auto theft strategy. So, your agency obviously plays a key role in the mayor's auto theft strategy, and a lot of times when they're talking about it, it's centered around the tow yards specifically. And while the numbers provided state that carjackings are down, stolen auto incidents are significantly up, 229%, what I want to know is how is shared data being used between your agency and BPD to proactively assess lighting needs in areas that have shown the largest uptick in stolen auto incidents, or just trends in carjackings?
So, there is a current effort in collaboration, I think, throughout the city, BPD and others, to try to tackle the stolen car issues. Given the amount of time and construction that goes into installing lighting, new lighting, that, I don't believe, has been an aspect of that conversation just yet, but I can definitely share with the team to see if there's any commonalities or trends that we can identify, any type of patterns in the areas where it's occurring, and there are significantly dark areas, to see what options exist.
I would love for that to happen. I notice you guys, or whoever's doing the data, is able to overlay those maps, especially if there are trends, and there are, say, within 311 areas that we know. But also, proactively working with BPD, if our police officers are out there, I know that they can see, just like everybody else, if certain areas may have lighting studies, so I'm not sure if that's... I just want to make sure that we're thinking about every aspect and being very proactive about it. Thank you for your response.
Understood.
And we were also joined by Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District. Members of the committee, did you guys have any questions? Councilman Torrance, I can't. Do you got any questions? Councilman Dorsey, you just came in. Do you have any questions for DOT?
Sure.
Okay, have it.
I apologize for arriving late. Thank you, Madam Chair. We've had a bunch of, sort of what I would call bike-friendly speed humps installed recently, but mostly they're ones that were installed, like a full-speed hump, and then had the center cut out of them. And it's really, it's left a lot of debris in the roadway. It's left, I would say, not a particularly good rendition of a bike-friendly speed hump. And in some cases, the cuts are directly on the double-yellow line, like on Glenmore Road, which is not a safe place for a cyclist to be cutting through a speed hump. They're just, they're not right. And I'm not sure what I'm supposed to say about this, except for, they need to be replaced with something that's actually the right thing. Are we going to do anything about this?
So, the only reference Glenmore, I think that may have been the only location that we came back in and cut out the area after the full-speed bump was installed. If there were other locations, let me know, and I'll take a look at them. But that was, in communications with you, of course, that was a change that we made. So, we did go back and try to put in more of the bike-friendly type of design, but since they were already in, that's why the team cut them out. I'm not sure the work that would go into actually trying to completely remove them and redo them, but we'll take a look at it to see what additional attention they may need.
I mean, in that particular location, they were never supposed to have gone in in the first place, right? We had a commitment to do something different in that location in the first place, and, you know, that's to say nothing of the fact that nothing was communicated to me or the neighbors there that these were going to be installed in the first place. So, this has been not a success, like, all around. But I can also tell you that I came across 36th Street just a couple of days ago, and the ones there were done the same way. It's a jagged cut down the, you know, down those, I mean, at least in that location, they weren't cut on the double-yellow in an unsafe location, but it's just a kind of a jagged cut made after the fact, from what I can tell. I also understand that while I had been waiting for a bike-friendly speed hump design follow-up from the budget back in July, that actually, we've had one in hand, signed off by an engineer in-house, dating back to when Steve Sharkey was director. So, I don't understand why that wasn't made known when I asked about it during the budget. I just learned about that. So, I don't know why I haven't even heard from DOT that we actually have this bike-friendly speed hump design engineered that I've been asking for, for years.
Councilman, this is Liam Davis from City DOT, and we'll make, we have submitted, we have the design handy that has been submitted, and I'll work with Nina to make sure that gets in your inbox today.
I appreciate that. Knowing that the department has this in hand and has had this in hand, again, since Steve Sharkey was the director, and, like, I don't understand why we're not also building based on that spec. And I guess my next question is, like, what's going to become our standard?
So, that's some of what's still under evaluation. So, there are times when we do install those. That's in discussion and coordination with the Fire Department and other factors. So, from what my awareness is beforehand, that template came up in collaboration with the Fire Department, and there's been, I'll say, in some other areas, some other cities, there's been some concern that those maybe are not as effective as the traditional speed humps. And so, before just going out and installing the modified speed hump standard across the board, we wanted to have a better understanding of a difference in speed, because, again, most communities, the communities are asking for speed humps for that traffic calming. So, we want to make sure that they were going to be fully effective before we just put them out there everywhere.
Thank you, Director. We're going to get to, I got a quick question about the safe streets, the Safe Streets and Roads for All. How are you guys going to, how's your agency going to prioritize where this funding is going, and how you're going to be implementing these plans within the communities?
So, I'll touch on it a little bit, and then I'll turn it over to Stu Sirota to give you a little more detail. So, there was a specific, as opposed to, say, like, our federal funding or HUR funding that just comes in, then we program it out, this was a specific grant package that we had to develop the proposal and get approval for that. So, this is more, this is a, we already previously had a planning-level grant from them to develop a strategic action safety plan, and so this is more of a demonstration grant. So, it'll get more into the, some of the education and outreach aspects, and then also having certain, some implementation, just try to try things out to see how things work. But, Stu, if you want to add more to that?
Good morning. Certainly. So, as part of the scope of work for the action plan that we have right now, we are partnering with Morgan State, as well as Johns Hopkins, and also University of Maryland. They will be conducting research to identify a high-injury crash network that will inform us for the next phase of the work, where we can do quick builds and to actually start implementing measures based on the findings of that research over the next year.
Do you have a rough estimate of the, with the grant amount that was received, how many projects, like, estimate how many projects you would be able to complete, or?
My understanding is that we are targeting two to three corridors in the city, and each corridor could be a mile or two long. And within each of those corridors, there could be multiple areas where we would do this sort of quick, quick-build projects to test. Yeah, so, we don't have an exact number, but we know that we are targeting two to three high-injury areas around the city of about a mile to two long each.
The one other item from your, from the presentation that I'm interested in is regarding the fully staffing of the CDL drivers. Obviously, it's something that we're all excited about. I'm way more excited than my face is actually showing right now. But what got you guys to that number?
Well, I mean, I would have to say the one, the bonus aspect definitely helps, both in the recruitment and the retention of our CDL drivers, and then just the outreach. The HR team has been doing different hiring events, both here, some of the city organized ones, and others that we've been a part of. Potentially even, like, word of mouth is always beneficial when there's the bonus component. No, there's anything additional to really speak on?
No, I think I've...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's about it. Just the outreach to the different organizations. This past Sunday, there was also...
I'm sorry to cut you off. Can you just give me your first and last name?
I'm sorry. I'm Erica Luckett. Good morning. And I am the Acting Chief of HR. It was a recruitment event that we just did. It was a two-part expungement fair and career fair at Johns Hopkins as well, where we were able to reach out to quite a few ex-offenders and possibly get those, some good candidates for CDL drivers as well.
Thank you, committee members. Okay. And Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had two quick questions, and I'll take my others offline. We're still waiting for several poles for lights, pedestrian lights. Do we know when those are coming in? I have two in my district still waiting.
Good morning, Tavon Braxton. I don't have a specific date, but we did submit an emergency procurement to acquire those poles. I guess that's the only hindrance. When we get them, we can install them.
It's been a year.
We understand. The vendors have their own issues, but we've exhausted our ability to acquire them.
And this was a follow-up to the chairwoman's question about, you know, the safety aspect. So, we need those poles in. Is there anything we can do to help make sure that that occurs, like, tomorrow?
So, it's, that unfortunately is one of those supply-and-demand matters. So, it's, we've made the request, we've put in, I think, the efforts to try to get the materials. They just haven't been delivered yet. So, we can, again, follow up with the vendor to check and see if there's an updated estimated delivery date or anything like that. But that's a little bit of our...
And you looked at all different vendors, and you try, I mean, we, like, this is a big deal.
Understood.
Okay, thanks. I'll just limit it to that. I'll ask offline. Thanks. Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to flag this for Nina. After hearing the chairwoman's comments and then the councilwoman's comments, I think that we should have a conversation about crime prevention through environmental design, especially given Stockton Street in my district. I'm actually putting in legislation next month that will allow us to do street closures, lighting enhancements, as well as deployments. Based off of that, it will be multi-agency coordination between BPD, the Sheriff's Office, DOT, DPW, as well as wrecking parks in terms of forestry, because I think that we need to have areas that we prioritize through crime prevention, through environmental design. I just want to give the administration a heads-up that it is coming your way, and that you will more than likely have to address it.
On that note, we are in recess on this hearing.
I'm sorry.
On that note, we are in recess on this hearing. We have two additional hearings that we're going to be doing today. Also, the Finance and Performance Committee will be doing upcoming hearings with all of our agencies, including our next one, DPW, next week. Thank you. We are now going to start on the hearing on LO-22-0019 for the purpose of calling for quarterly oversight hearings for the Department of Public Works. At this time, we are going to hear from our representatives from the Department of Public Works, and we'll have an opportunity for committee members to ask questions.
Thank you, Chair McCray, members of the council, for this hearing for today. My name is Richard Luna. I'm the interim director for the Department of Public Works. Number of staff that we have with us today that are going to be sharing in this presentation, so as they present, I'll ask them to introduce themselves, so we could just keep things moving, moving along quickly. First, I'll just hit on three topics before we jump into the presentation. As the council's fully aware, DPW is on track to implement weekly recycling, starting in the first part of 2024. We want to thank Mayor Scott and his administration for the full support that they've given us over the past several months, including additional staff that were brought into our budget, all the number of trucks that we've procured through our partners at DGS. And currently, right now, we're still working with all of our partner agencies. We've been meeting about this weekly, are meeting about this regularly, in terms of the rollout phase for implementing weekly recycling in the first part of '24. So, we don't have a date for you today, but as soon as that information is available, that we coincide on a date with all of our partner agencies, we'll be getting that information out to the council so that they're fully aware, so that you can let your constituents know as well, too, in terms of that start and resumption date. The other two projects I want to talk about quickly is just the work, ongoing work over at Ashburden and Injurate Lake Reservoir Projects. Those projects are still slated for completion, for functional use by those deadlines. So, Ashburden at the end of this month, at the end of November, Injurate Lake at the end of December. Once those two tanking projects are complete, that means we will no longer be required to do the weekly testing for cryptosporidium and gerardia. Since we've implemented weekly testing for both reservoirs, we've had no detections of cryptosporidium or gerardia at either of those reservoirs. Finally, we'll present some information as well, too, about the consent decree that we've recently negotiated with MDE and Blue Water Baltimore. I just want to note that that consent decree is still scheduled for approval at the Board of Estimates next week, and then after approval, it still has to go to the courts to be approved by the judge. So, there will be limited information that we can provide in terms of the consent decree. But I do want to take a moment just to applaud all of our staff within the wastewater division for all of the hard work that they've put in over the past two years at getting those two plants into compliance, and then maintaining that compliance over a series of consecutive months. And it was a tremendous effort by their, by that team in order to get that work completed and to maintain that compliance, and that should be applauded every opportunity we have a chance to do so. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over next to our Chief Administrative Officer, Ms. Deep DeMota, who's going to give you an update on HR staffing levels.
Good morning. I'm Deep DeMota. I'm the Chief Administrative Officer. Next slide. All right. As it relates to our vacancy, overall vacancy rate for the agency is 22%. Our solid waste bureau has the lowest vacancy as compared to any large vacancy, any large agencies. It's at 7%, and our water and wastewater is at 26%. Next slide. Currently, we have three solid waste workers, 10 laborers, and one driver vacancy in our solid waste bureau. We've already identified candidates for these vacancies, and they, we anticipate filling them by the beginning of next month. We were focusing on our drivers and solid waste workers' vacancies for due-to-weekly recycling, and we're going to pivot and start focusing on the CDL2s, the 13 CDL2 vacancies. So, they should be, we're going to start focusing on those shortly. Next slide. In our water and wastewater, we have a similar story, 11 labor vacancies. We've identified candidates for them already. We're going to fill them with our temporary staff, our YH2O, and our higher-up employees. And then, again, we'll pivot and start focusing on those CDL2 vacancies as well in the water and wastewater bureau. Next slide. At the last hearing, we discussed the Partnership at Mercy and the ease of scheduling our pre-employment processing appointments. As you... As you can see, we do not have an issue for scheduling those pre-employment appointments. Our problem is our deferred candidates now, it's roughly 50% since the beginning of this year. We are partnering and collaborating with DHR to determine if there's anything we can do to assist these candidates, to help them pass their pre-employment exam testing. We're also partnering with Mercy to determine what is causing them to be deferred. A lot of it is PHI, HIPAA, paternity information, but we're still partnering with Mercy to see if there's anything we can do for these candidates. And then since the last hearing, our HR team has been doing a tremendous job in increasing our recruitment efforts. They participated in several events in September, and the last one they had was in October, where they partnered with NCI in a job fair that focused on our driver vacancies.
Good morning. My name is Darnell Ingram, General Counsel and Chief Compliance Officer. I will be discussing my consent decree, our recently negotiated consent decree regarding our wastewater treatment plants. Currently, we have negotiated with the Maryland Department of Environment as well as Blue Water Baltimore, the two plaintiffs in both a state and federal action, in which the parties have agreed to a consent decree regarding the Back River and Patapsco wastewater treatment plants. I would like to express, as Director Luna has indicated, the great work that this administration, as well as the staff and personnel and also our contractors, to ensure that we got into compliance and maintained compliance. And we were able to establish a path forward to meet all our commitments to hold everyone accountable as we work through remaining compliance issues. The consent decree is tentatively going before the Board of Estimates, November 15, 2023, which is next Wednesday, which will solidify the terms between the city and the plaintiffs. Once the Board of Estimates approves the consent decree, it will go to the court for final approval. And I just want to express that the Back River Plant has been in compliance since March of 2022, even though we had a minor hiccup. And we all know due to the explosion at the plant, as well as we had a very high rain amount in the month of April, which literally got us over 0.02 above our parameters, our affluent parameters. Just an anomaly, just a totality of circumstances that occurred. But throughout, since March of '22, Back River Plant has been in compliance, as well as Patapsco since September of 2022. And so with that, thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Yvonne Moore Jackson, Deputy Bureau Head for Solid Waste. As you all just heard, next slide. As you all just heard, we are on track to fill all the vacancies in order to get back to weekly recycling. Next slide. We are on track also with the vehicles. We are scheduled to get 14 in in December. Right now, we have 70 available. We need to have at least 90 in order to get back to weekly recycling. So with those 15, I'm sorry, those 14 that are coming in will be right on schedule to begin in the first quarter of 2024. As far as our performance service requests, we've completed since July 88,000 service requests, which is 1% more than we received last year and 1% more than were created last year. Next slide. An update on our solid waste management plan. We have got the first approval, and we're looking to finalize the approvals by November 20th so that the plan can be adopted and sent to MDE no later than November 30th. So we're excited about that. I also want to let everyone know that we have textile recycling now, so people can bring their clothes, shoes, sheets, towels, and things like that over to our five drop-off centers. So we have two bins over there for that. And also, we have expanded our food scrap services. We have five new locations in Homewood and at Johns Hopkins Hospital, University of Baltimore, two locations, and also at Loyola. So you can bring your food scraps to those five locations or also at our five drop-off centers and the two farmer's markets. Just an update on our facility improvements. We did get some small changes so far. You can see in these photos, we had some locker room upgrades, also some of our office furniture is finally delivered. The Kane Street project is underway. We have a vendor that is going through the design phase right now, so that'll be the first facility that will be completed. Next, we have selected a contractor for the rebirth renovations.
Deputy Bureau Head, I'm sorry to cut you off. Do you mind speaking a little bit closer to the mic for me, please? Thank you.
Okay, is that better? Okay. And then also, the Eastside Transfer Station. We just got approved for a contractor for that on October 18th, so that'll be underway. At the Eastside Transfer Station, there are nine acres of land that we can use for the transfer station. Also, a composting facility that we just received $4 million for. Our small haulers program will be expanded, and then also our regular east side operations for trash and recycling. So all of those things will be at the new Eastside Transfer Station. Thank you.
I'm Paul Sane. I'm the Acting Bureau Head for the Bureau of Water and Wastewater. So just running through some updates on the Water and Wastewater Bureau. So we had the cryptosporidium positive test that came from our September 19th sample at Jewett Lake. Since that time, we have had six consecutive weeks of negative gerardia and cryptosporidium test results from both Ashburn and Jewett Lake. We're on a weekly testing cycle now, testing on, collecting samples on usually Tuesday mornings, and then getting results back Wednesday afternoon, Thursday morning. Moving over to Cromwell Pump Station. If you recall, earlier this year, we had a fire that broke out at our Cromwell Pump Station. Within two weeks, we were able to restore partial power to that station, continue operations for both Baltimore City and Baltimore County. Since that time, the station operations are stable. The water system in totality is operating within normal parameters. We have temporary generators over at the Guilford Pump Stations that were installed as a precautionary measure, but those are planned to be removed in December of 2023. And then our capital project to rehabilitate that pump station, construction bids are projected to be advertised in February of next year. Just echoing what Director Luna had mentioned, at the Jewett Lake and the Ashburn Underground Tanks, so Jewett Lake, I'm sorry, Ashburn Tank is first up. It has a deadline of November 30th of 2023. We are on schedule to meet that deadline for functional use. The rest of the work, the site work itself, will take us into summer of 2024. Over at Jewett Lake, that has a deadline of December 30th, '23. We are on schedule to meet that deadline as well, again, functional use. And then the rest of the construction will take us into the summer of 2024. Lastly, is on the Tiffany Run Cinco at Montebello. So that work was temporarily halted in September of this year due to some unforeseen ground conditions, ground movement in the area. So out of safety, we stopped all construction work in that area. Since that time, we've done some additional geotechnical investigations. We've modified the supportive excavation, and we actually resumed the supportive excavation work this week. So the storm drain and water main repair work is tentatively scheduled to be completed in the spring of '24.
Good morning. My name is Latoya Curtis, Acting Chief of Staff for DPW, and I'll be reporting out on the waterfall updates. To date, we have 3,625 total approved homeowners, 656 total approved tenants. The total amount of dollars approved is $3.8 million and broken out by 2.9 by homeowners and $844,000 by tenants. We have a total of 9,805 applications. 6,222 are for homeowners and 3,583 are for total tenants. Next slide. This graph shows the number of applicants by zip code. Broken out 21215, there are 1,203. Zip code 29, 923. 06, 875. 13, 868. 16, 744. 18, 685. 17, 499. 39, 485. 24, 484. 23, 470. And 30, 379. And in the graph below, it shows the number of applications by council districts. Next, we will talk about Promise Pay. We have 2,403 active plans, and all of those are residential. The average plan balance is $1,382, and 93% of our plans are on track. The median balance is 953 accounts. I would like to add that we've just approved adding commercial accounts to Promise Pay, so we will now allow commercial customers to be a part of the Promise Pay payment plans to be able to collect on those dollars. The total number of dollars collected to date is $1,281,884. We've had processed 14,687 payments. And what we have scheduled in the system is $3,214,568 and 196,000 future payments.
And so with that, Chair McCray, members of the council, that concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you have.
I want to start with Promise Pay. What was the rationale to include commercial customers? Like, how are we prioritizing them? Is it, are we looking at how many, are the small commercial customers, say they only have one to five employees? Or what does that look like?
We want to collect on all of our commercial accounts, so any commercial account can come into the payment plan. We're trying to intensify our collection efforts, and that's one of the avenues to get those commercial accounts to start paying on those accounts.
Are you, I mean, so let me ask this. Is there a list that you're, is there a list that you're working from? What's the average amount that you're seeing on your list for our commercial customers?
I don't have that information, but I can get it to you. There is a list that we are working off of. We're working with our legal department to collect on those accounts as well.
I'll follow, I got some additional questions. I'll follow up offline. I want to quickly get some more information about the textile recycling item that is being rolled out. How are we pushing the information? I know how I'm pushing the information, but how is DPW pushing this information to our constituents so they know? Also, another item, I know, hey, it says something about towels, about sheets. Is this any, like, any product, whether it's soil? What are the requirements as well? Just so, just so we're clear on it.
Hello, Sophia Hussein, Zero Waste Manager for the Bureau of Solid Waste. We are working with a textile service provider called Helpsee. They have a very vast list of acceptable materials, and they have differentiated solutions for each tier. So, for example, if there are soiled textiles or clothes with holes or anything like that, things that are destroyed, those go to a remanufacturing stream where I believe the process is that the textiles are shredded and then manufactured into something, another type of material. Often, they're like rags. So they have, and then they also will glean anything that is usable for re-wearing. And I think they have platforms for both redonating goods but also selling textiles that are in good condition to contribute to the secondhand clothing market. So those, I mean, the, we really like working with this provider because they don't say no to much, and they have a lot of transparency on where these materials go. So the way that we are talking about this to the residents, we have a monthly newsletter that we put out where we talk about any new services that are coming online. We've also updated the website with the full list of materials because it's quite long. We try to keep the synopsis in our outreach a little bit shorter and then guide people to more in-depth information if they're interested. We are also looking at putting together a communications plan for recycling in general, where we'll be able to put out this material or these education and outreach efforts more regularly and are trying to understand what the funding needed to put together a communications plan is right now.
And I ask that question because we know, I'm even thinking about myself. I upcycle my stuff. If I have items that I can't use, I'm going to cut them up instead of throwing them in the trash. I'm going to use them and wash them for like, for washing around the house, for cleaning different things. I don't want to put them in our streams. But this was exciting to me, and I just want to make sure that, say, the council members, their staff, like the DPW, is also doing their best. I cannot wait to see a communications plan overall for recycling. But I want to make sure that folks are getting the information and they know that these places, that these boxes for drop-off are at our drop-off centers and that they're available. I'll stop there. I'm going to check to my right with my committee members if you have any questions. Councilman Torres.
More so a comment and then our committee request for our next quarterly hearing. I want to make sure that we solely focus on the Office of Engineering and Construction. I am still disgusted with the agency's actual staffing in terms of how we are carrying out water projects. The amount of corrections we've had to make with street cuts through DOT is costing us a lot of money. I think at one time, one project from you guys, I think we had over $60,000 in stock work orders and violations for workers' safety. Someone died on a project. Just yesterday, we received an email where our contractor parked equipment in the actual crosswalk that children have to cross to get to school. And I'm at a point where I think we need to have a conversation about leadership change in DPW and that division. I'm just being frank, so the public can understand how frustrated I am. Because it is unacceptable in black and brown neighborhoods that I have to alert you that there is a Cinco being created because of your work, right? Or the lack that I have now found out that inspectors are not showing up to actually inspect, right? And I'm upset because to those, if we just saw the actual zip codes who are asking us for water assistance, those are black and brown neighborhoods where people are paying these infrastructure fees, and we're making sure that the roads that they have to use are in poor condition because of our contractors not being checked. I'm upset because those people are people who are asking us to make sure that things stay affordable. And every mistake that a contractor makes costs money on contingencies for the project. That's less water mains that we're putting in the ground, that's less pipes that we're repairing. And I see that two parts in communications with not only persons who are project managers who are sending employees and contractors. There is no formal way of saying this. The customer service is lacking. The respect for residents is lacking. And I'm saying this passionately because I want you to understand. If there is no change, I will put it like this, I will cut the agency person in charge of that division out of the budget, to be frank. I am disgusted because it has gone on deaf ears. We had this conversation on the budget hearing. There has been no changes. We continually get the same emails about the same issues. So, Madam Chair, my request is to have a formal oversight hearing for that specific office with that leadership team here, as well as inspectors present to understand like the actions that they take, right? This is costing Baltimore City residents money. And for those who saw that chart and that actual graphic of who's requesting for water assistance, that's black and brown people, the people who are sustaining this city. So I just want to make sure that we have that conversation. So I just want to make sure that we have that conversation publicly so people can understand the lackluster services that we're getting from that division. While I'm happy to see things are going well in solid waste, the water portion is out of control. Case in point, today, I still don't know the down to the blades of grass for my two parks in terms of the tank projects, when resurfacing is occurring, when those actual projects are completed. I'm still waiting on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your passion. Councilman Torrance, we have a new committee. It's the Finance and Performance Committee. So we, what I will make sure that we do is speak to our new chair for that committee, Chair Balak, and see where it would be best to have this legislative oversight hearing that you're requesting. I'm open to it. I just want to make sure that we do it the right way.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Another point that I want to make as a piece of clarification. Right now, I have about 9%. Let me, let me just be clear. My zip code in 21206, those are middle neighborhoods. It's something that I always trump, but I want to be very clear that those are black, black legacy homeowners. Those are black neighborhoods, majority, that are getting those things. I just think that it's best that we are clear when we're using terminology. But 21206, those communities that are putting them in there are black legacy homeowners within those neighborhoods. We're going to go to Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the department for walking us through a couple of updates. I think those are important ones. I also want to thank the department for a recent meeting that I had with a couple of members of the communities that surround Herring Run and particularly the project going on in my district. It was helpful to have that conversation. I think we learned a couple of things that are really, really important. And I think we want to make sure we continue to implement those suggestions from that meeting going forward. First and foremost, communication. I think we've, time and time again, come across some difficulties with keeping the communities up to date on major projects happening within their neighborhoods or within their parks. This project is, of course, on public lands and a wrecking park land. But nonetheless, had some significant interest from neighbors about the impact on the forest, the impact on the stream. And I think legitimate concerns about the utility of the project. This is more just a reminder or word of advice to the department. Please, please, please make sure that we are continuously reaching out to, of course, the council members. I didn't know this project was going on in my own district until a couple of weeks ago. Let us know what's going on so that we're not surprised when we start getting emails and phone calls. But then too, of course, make sure that we're reaching out to the community. It's just not a position anybody wants to be in. I appreciate we are now working with the community and listening to their concerns. But I think it's just really important, especially for projects of that size or even smaller sometimes, reaching out to nearby communities and make sure their voices are heard. Director, you're welcome to.
No, thank you, Councilmember Conway. So first, just want to say thank you as well for being part of that meeting earlier in this week, as well as Councilman Dorsey. Lots, lots that we can learn from this specific project. So I'll just start off by saying that as the community concerns were raised about Herring Run and the stream restoration project, we paused all work. So there's no work that's happening. Our staff has continuously gone out there with the contractors to do some additional assessments. So my understanding is the original tree inventory was completed back in 2017. So we're doing our due diligence and going out there and doing an updated inventory of all trees' conditions throughout that entire project. I think through that meeting earlier in this week, biggest takeaway for me is just the additional outstanding questions that the community had raised. And so we're doing our best part. And we captured all that information, working with the team as far as providing responses because it's really on us to provide as much information as we can so that the public, so that the council members, so that everybody is aware of, this is the project, this is what its benefits are, and providing all of that information as best as possible and being as open and transparent. So we're continuously gathering that information. But as soon as we have it ready for you, we'll be redistributing that back out to you.
I appreciate that, Director. And of course, everything, this is a matter of process and making sure that no matter what the process is, we do that going forward. The key point here that I also want to bring up is regarding contracts and the management of said contracts. You know, we had a stream restoration a few years ago. Actually, when I first came on and Councilman Dorsey and I had an opportunity to walk down Chikman Park and sort of see the stream restoration project, there were a ton of trees planted there. One of the criticisms that I think both myself and Councilman Dorsey shared about that project is that there wasn't very much oversight after the work went into the ground and the maintenance of that work afterward. I think it's a, we do ourselves a huge disservice if we don't hold those contractors accountable and follow up and follow through on the condition of the work that they do after it's completed. Right now, we're now considering having Wreckin Parks pick up the responsibility of removing trees and cleaning up trees for a project that was done now three years ago. So, you know, the second note of caution here is just, we need to make sure we shore up our efforts to hold contractors accountable. We spend hundreds of millions of dollars a year, and that is probably some of our most important money spent because it's infrastructure. And we'll be here for a very, very long time. So just making sure that when contractors do this work, they do it well, we follow up, we follow through, and we make sure we get our money's worth is important. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I want to recognize Councilman Isaac Gieschleifer from the 5th District, also Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District, both members of the committee that have joined us. At this time, Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very encouraged to see on page 12 that the solid waste positions have been filled. So thank you for that. Now that these positions are filled, when are we restarting recycling?
Thank you, Councilman. So as I had mentioned in my opening statement, we still don't have a date yet. So we're continuously working with multiple city agencies, the administration, and picking out a date. I'll highlight as well, Slide 13, which shows the status of trucks that we procure. So for recycling services, that's 80 trucks in total that our partners over at DGS had ordered for us. So of the 80 that were ordered, only five have arrived so far. Those came in in July of '23. Like our Deputy Bureauhead had mentioned, 14 of those will be arriving in December. We'll have another three coming in in January. So those trucks there, in addition with the new staff that we're aggressively going out recruiting and hiring for, is what's going to help get this city back to weekly recycling. So as those two things align and we have a date set, like I mentioned in my opening statement, we'll be getting that information out to you once we have that date set.
So is the previous date of a partial rollout in February and a full rollout in April, is that no longer the case?
We are currently looking at all options.
So were those dates that we were given previously, are those incorrect?
I would say we're evaluating those more thoroughly. And so as we have that information, whether it's a phased approach in rolling out weekly recycling, whether it's as we're going to pick a specific date and get everybody on the same date, like I said, those are still the conversations that we're having with our multiple different agencies and partners. As we get these new trucks procured and secured, then we'll be giving you that information. And as soon as we have it, we'll be getting that to you as well.
So where did those dates come from?
Still just conversations, ongoing conversations that we've been discussing with a number of different partners, as well as potential contract support that we're going to bring on or secure. So like I mentioned, as soon as we have a confirmed date of when weekly recycling will start, we're happy to get that over to you.
So are you still going to be doing a partial rollout, then a full rollout?
Like I said, we're still considering all options at this point.
So when are you going to be done considering these options and making a decision?
I haven't determined as terms of that timeline. We meet regularly within our, within our DPW staff, Bureau of Solid Waste, all of our support agencies. We meet regularly with the administration. So as soon as we have that date secured, as soon as we have that plan finalized, we will be getting that out to you.
Okay, so the dates we were given a couple of weeks ago, those are made up. And we don't know if that's accurate or not. You'll get back to us at an undisclosed date on when you have an idea of when this would restart. Is that accurate?
I'll start off and say first, I understand the importance of getting weekly recycling out to the entire Baltimore City, to all of our residents, to all of our constituents. I understand how important that is. So we're doing everything possible to make sure that we are completely aligned, whether it's DPW staff, DGS that's going to support us in the trucks, HR in terms of supporting us and hiring these additional staff members. As those two things align, as we get all of the positions filled, as we get these new trucks aligned, we'll be getting, working together with all of those agencies and the administration to pick a date. And all of that information will be fully transparent and will be shared with not just the council members, but the entire community.
Thank you, interim Director, Councilman Schleifer. We want to come back to you. Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Director, I wanted to just kind of go to Slide 18, 19, and 20, and 21 of the, of the presentation, particularly focusing on water and wastewater updates. Over the past few weeks, I've been sending, I believe, your office about open wastewater requests within the neighborhoods upwards of like, almost 20 of them that have been unfulfilled in the district. What are we doing to ensure that those wastewater management issues that we're seeing in the neighborhoods are being resolved? I understand that there are inter-agency issues and inter-agency coordination that's happening, but it just doesn't seem to be moving forward. And I don't see it reflected in the presentation today.
Yeah, so a number of different requests. And thank you as well, Councilwoman, for sending me those. As you can imagine, I do get a number of those requests, not just from your office, but throughout the entire council district. Especially with our Utility Maintenance Division staff, it's getting out there and completing that work as quickly as possible. And sometimes there's other main breaks or other items that are, that are maybe more priority in terms of just for that day or that instance. And so making sure that we're doing everything possible to get those out. I think as, to the Councilmember Torrance's recommendation as well, too, as we're starting talking about contract management, Office of Engineering and Construction, I think that could also dovetail into the utility maintenance work as well. And just sharing that information with you to provide as much information as we can. I can turn it over to our Bureauhead as well, too, to talk about how they do handle that work.
So before we go into that, Director, I actually want to speak directly to you as the lead of the agency. One of the things that I'm really concerned about, and you hit the nail right on the head, is the contract management and the project management of these particular issues. I'm concerned that, you know, most of the responses that were provided here today lack a timeline associated with it. They lack any type of designated responsible person and/or entity that can really move, move the projects forward. And so my question to you as leader of the agency and your leadership team, how are we developing those project management timelines? How are we communicating it throughout the agencies so that we have some accurate timelines that we can really send to the council, but also that we're communicating out to the public as well?
And thank you for that question. And as well, too, Councilmember Torrance, for your comments earlier. I think overall, this is great feedback for myself. So as I continuously work with our teams throughout, whether it's water and wastewater or solid waste, understanding from the council and your expectations from us is that you want to see hard deadlines set for some of these projects and for some of this work. So first, I just want to say thank you for that. We'll continuously work with our staff. We talk about different projects and different various projects in our regular meetings, compliance call daily meetings that we have with our multiple different divisions and getting that information. But I think it's really critical, especially for it's a project in your specific district that's impacting your constituents. It's on us to get you that information and be accurate in the dates that we're providing to you.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a formal committee request. If we can have a operational standard operating, excuse me, a standard operating procedure related to contract management and timelines and communications for major projects that are spanning more than one year to each of the council members' offices. Thank you.
Do you guys have a SOP for what's being requested?
Yes, ma'am, we do. For both operations for engineering and construction, as well as for when we have to divert work from our Utility Maintenance Division to the on-call contractors.
Okay, so you can get that to us. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. May I say one more thing? Thank you, ma'am. So if, even if there is a standard operating procedure, it's clearly not, it's clearly not working. And so I'm requesting that we revisit the standard operating procedures and refine it to reflect real timelines, real DRIs, and real communication strategy towards the council so that we can share this information out to the public.
And I'll just add quickly, I think that was the item, too, that I recalled in your comment. So we'll take a look at the SOP to see if it specifically talks about updates externally to neighborhood associations, to our council members. And if it's not in there, we'll work at getting that included.
Let's try to work on, let's try to work on a request. As a committee request, I'm in a, let's try to work on it. If you can, if you can get what we have so far and get it to Councilwoman, and get it to Councilwoman Porter, because we are not able to just dictate from the committee level through a committee request what their standard operating procedures should be. However, if we can work with the agency or you can work with Councilwoman Porter on it, then that'll work. Yes, Councilwoman, Council, Councilman Torrance, you have the floor.
I just have added a request to that. This is from the administration. I know that we're working on the procurement process for unbundling as well as past contracts. I just want to know, for this agency and DOT, where are we in terms of amending their, our bids so that we can score contractors on past performance like the state does? So when they do make errors and issues, that we're no longer issuing them contracts or we're making them take discounts on the work that they perform in Baltimore City? I just want to make sure that we are clear because that is where I feel that OEC is failing to meet the muster in terms of contract administration, as well as their project managers are failing to meet the muster in terms of holding contractors accountable, right? So I just want to make sure that when we're looking at it, I think there should be a conversation with procurement as well in terms of supporting them in these past performances, especially in neighborhoods. Because I can list six contractors that I know violated our street cuts violations off the top of my head. So I just want to make sure that we have a conversation with administration, with procurement as well as the city administrator about this. Because there's urgency in terms of the cost that's being shared onto our residents because of the failures of the agency.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. I'll make sure that we get together with procurement and the city administrator's office and then provide follow-up to the committee.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got the impression some time ago that it was DOT that was planning to procure street sweeping trucks of a smaller size to be able to sweep bike lanes. But then more recently, the DOT director unequivocally told me that that was entirely on DPW. And I'm trying to sort this out and what the state is of getting smaller street sweeping trucks for bike lanes.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. So DOT is responsible for the maintenance of the bike lanes in terms of the actual street sweepers for that? We can follow back up with DOT and DGS on that procurement.
Nina, I got two agencies going like this. That's not working.
I appreciate your comments, Councilman. I'll make sure that everybody comes together and we're able to provide you a clear response.
Thank you. It's just a personal request for some information. I'm really curious. Can DPW provide a spreadsheet, an Excel spreadsheet? I've received way too much information in the much less usable and helpful format of a PDF in the past. I really mean it when I say an Excel spreadsheet, of the counts of the numbers of different size water meters per council district? Does that make sense? I want to know how many 5/8 inch meter counts. We have active, active accounts. How many 5/8 inch? I want to know how many 5/8 inch meter counts, we have active accounts, how many 5/8 inch meters, how many 3/4 inch, 1 inch, and other size meters we have in each council district?
Yes, so we'll pull that information from our UMAC system and billing system, and then put that over to you in an Excel file, and we'll map that out by the, or at least differentiate it by council district.
Okay, cool. That's pretty straightforward, right? How long do you think that might take?
It'll take a few days to at least pull up.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Councilman Schleifer, we're going to end it with you. I told you I was going to get back to you. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director, you said you understand the importance of restarting weekly recycling. It does not feel or seem like you understand the importance of being honest and transparent with the city council and just answering simple questions. And so I'm making a formal committee request that you provide all correspondence between you and your executive team regarding the resumption of weekly recycling. I'd like a timeline as to when I can expect to receive that so that I can call an oversight hearing in my committee to review that information. So how long will it take you to provide that information?
Is your request for written communication?
Yeah, all communication notes, anything you guys have regarding the information you said you guys keep meeting about, you keep having meetings, you keep having discussions about what it's going to take to restart weekly recycling, when you're going to do it, how you're going to do it. You won't answer the basic questions, so just provide me all of your deliberations so that I can come to the conclusion myself. I would like to know how long it will take you to provide all of those communications to the council so that I can schedule an oversight hearing accordingly.
Yeah, so first, let me start by just, I'll work with the team as far as pulling all that information together. Let me see how much information it is, how much we have to actually go. And I can provide you weekly updates in terms of when all that information can be completed and turned over to you?
No, 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 not weekly updates. I want all of the correspondence that you guys have been having regarding this deliberation on how weekly recycling is going to be resuming. You keep saying, you've said at multiple hearings, you have all these conversations, communications, there's vendor meetings, there's vendor communications. You won't answer the most basic question, and so therefore, you are going to provide all of those correspondence. And I'm asking you simply for a timeline of how long it is going to take for you to put those correspondence together.
Yeah, so like I mentioned, we'll start gathering all that information. I don't know the full breadth of it. I know a lot of the conversations on resumption of weekly recycling was over the course of several months. So like I said, I will pull all that information together once I get a realistic timeline of how long it'll take to capture all that information. Happy to provide you that update.
Thank you. So that's my first question. My second question is, what is the previous director doing now as a consultant for the agency?
Dr. Mitchell was hired as a contractual services employee for the city. To this date, he hasn't received any assignments.
Has he received any compensation?
No.
So when does his contract start?
It started on the BOE approval date. I think that was two meetings ago. I'd have to go back and look.
So the contract already started, but you haven't requested any of his services yet, so therefore, there hasn't been any compensation involved?
Correct. He's an hourly employee, so as he takes on assignments that are assigned by the agency, then he would track those hours and submit that time. But to date, he hasn't logged any hours.
So what was the purpose of hiring him? What specific assignments did you have in mind that would be sent in his direction?
Overall, in terms of an advisory role, and I'm pulling up the contract now, so give me a moment.
Or you can just forward me the contract instead?
Yeah, I could forward it to you.
Okay, thank you. And then one last thing. Somebody in the audience has submitted a question for me. They said a city garbage truck crashed into their garage in an alley and broke, I think it says their hose. There's no notice left. And so I want to know how they can properly, who they can speak to here today after this hearing to find some resolution to this issue and also the issue of illegal dumping by their house.
In terms of any property damage, that claim would be filed in the city's law department.
Gotcha. Okay, and then the illegal dumping, is there somebody here who can speak to the constituent who's here?
Yeah, we have staff here from solid waste. I could speak to them.
Whoever is going to speak to them, can you just raise your hand so they know who to speak to? Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, the lady in the back, if you can speak to her after the hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us. We are officially in recess for this hearing. The committee will reconvene legislative oversight hearings quarterly to continue this important discussion. Thank you. The committee is now going to hear Resolution 22-0136, our informational hearing, status of the Baltimore City Municipal Identification Card Program for the purpose of inviting the city solicitor and representatives from the Department of Finance, the mayor's office of Information Technology, the mayor's office of Immigrant Affairs, and other agencies to discuss the status of the Baltimore City Municipal Identification Card Program, including obstacles, solutions, and a timeline for implementation. For this hearing, we're going to start with brief, opening remarks from the sponsor. Then we're going to hear from our agencies, and then we're going to hear public testimony. And at this time, we are going to hear from our resolution sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, committee members. Thank you, Madam Chair, for scheduling this hearing as well and taking the time to really look at this program. In 2016, there was legislation passed to create a municipal ID program. This legislation was important at the time, and the program is still important now. There are people in our community that cannot access an ID. And what does that mean? That means that they cannot access housing, they cannot access services, they cannot access, you know, basic things that many of us get to enjoy because we have ID, but they are not able to get it. So today's hearing is about where are we in implementation of this important program? Why it took seven years, or whatever the math is, to get that done? And when we will be rolling it out? So I appreciate that we've been working, our office has been working with MLCFS and others, and the mayor's office for the past year. I introduced this resolution a year ago, to be able to come today with the status of where we are and when this program will be launched. So we are going to hear from our agencies about what the status is. I certainly have additional questions, as do I think my colleagues, and we do have some public testimony. So thank you, Madam Chair, for scheduling the hearing, and I look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to get right into our agency reports. We'll hear from our agency representatives and committee members. Please hold any questions that you have until we've heard from all of the agencies. Just as a reminder, for our agency representatives who are speaking, please provide your first and your last name, the agency you're with, and your title for the record. We are starting with the mayor's office of Children and Family Success.
Good morning. Dr. Deborah Brooks, the executive director of the mayor's office of Children and Family Success. And we stand by our report that was submitted, and we are available to answer any additional questions that you may have. We also have additional information to share as we have been working diligently during the distinct phase of planning, as there were three distinct phases that were, are part of the municipal ID, planning, implementation, and post-implementation. What the mayor's office of Children and Family Success has done over this year, we have been speaking with representatives from other cities that have implemented the municipal ID programs, such as Philadelphia and Chicago. We did a thorough investigation to find out what their planning stage looked like, how they, which vendors they worked with. We also were able to meet with the vendor that provided the support to both Chicago, Philadelphia, and San Francisco, that vendor being the Omicron Technologies. And we also met with the vendor Access 411 that has supported work with Baltimore City Public Schools. Through that research and working very diligently with those representatives, both in Philadelphia and Chicago, we did learn that in Philadelphia, the program took approximately five years to begin implementation, working through the planning stage. While Chicago did not disclose how long the program actually took for the planning, they did actually talk about the number of FTEs that they actually identified to begin this program, to make sure that it was equitable for all of their citizens. Also, we did, through learning through this, that given the size and scope of the project, that there really needed to be a recommendation to issue an RFP to evaluate the credentials, expertise, and costs to implement this program. So we've been working very closely with our procurement office as well.
Our law department?
Madam Chair, Hillary Rulie, on behalf of the city solicitor's office, we would approve this resolution for legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Finance department?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Laura Larson, city budget director, representing the Department of Finance. We stand by the report that was submitted and are available to answer any questions that the committee members may have.
Thank you. Beaviset?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Todd Carter, director for Beaviset. Beaviset stands by its report and will be here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. The mayor's office of Immigrant Affairs.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Thank you for this opportunity. Mima stands by its report in support of the municipal identification card. Over the years, we have worked with our colleagues throughout administrations, and we have emphasized a few items when it comes to the implementation of the municipal ID. One is to assess the demand for the card, to ensure that those who most stand to benefit from the ID are involved in the program from the beginning. Ensure that required information is kept confidential, as it is critical for vulnerable populations like undocumented immigrants. That messaging about the program should focus on those, should focus on the needs of underserved vulnerable communities who do not have access to identification, given limited resources. And that the program is accessible for individuals who are limited English proficient. And with that, we can assist as an office for this work. Mima can support agencies with community engagement, program design, help with multilingual messaging, communications, language access resources, and to develop strategies to enhance the trust of this program. Thank you.
Thank you. The office of Equity and Civil Rights.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tyler Chanel, government affairs manager for the office of Equity and Civil Rights. Our office fully endorses the intent of the enabling legislation. However, we have no role in the implementation of the municipal ID program. We stand ready to collaborate and provide guidance to ensure that the implementation of the project aligns with equity and civil rights. But that will be the extent of our involvement at this point.
Thank you. And LGBTQ affairs office?
I am London Smith Gerishalu, director of the mayor's office of LGBTQ affairs. So effective October 2019 was Senate Bill 196, and this legislation allowed for the change of gender marker on state identification without requirement of documentation to validate gender choice. Renewing your ID, and customers have the option to change their gender by selecting the M, the F, or the X on unspecified or other without need for supporting documentation. This provision empowers individuals to self-identify their gender according to their own understanding and personal experience. It acknowledges and respects the diverse gender identities of individuals. However, it is important to note that in accordance with the federal Real ID Act, certain documents may be necessary for the verification of name, date of birth, and address. And while gender identification is no longer tied to document requirements and other aspects of identification, there still needs to be supported by appropriate documentation. One specific concern that our office recognizes pertains to gender diverse youth who may face challenges in obtaining gender marker designation on their ID cards due to the requirement of parental or legal guardian consent. This concern is further exacerbated when considering the high proportion of homeless youth within the LGBTQ community who may lack access to parental or guardian authorization. The municipal ID serves as an essential tool for homeless LGBTQ youth, including transgender and non-binary individuals, for several compelling reasons, primarily cost and the removal of access barriers. Studies that have found that LGBTQ youth make up a significant portion of homeless population, with estimates suggesting that they represent up to 40% of all young people experiencing homelessness. This municipal ID can help these individuals access housing assistance programs, shelters, and enabling them to secure stable and safe accommodations. It provides a reliable form of identification, which is essential for accessing services, benefits such as housing, healthcare, education, employment, financial resources without proper identification. These vulnerable youth often are faced with barriers in securing stable housing, employment opportunities, and essential support systems. The ability to change the gender marker in the municipal ID without requiring parental consent would be a significant step forward in recognizing and affirming the self-identified gender of gender diverse youth. This provision would acknowledge and respect their autonomy and ensure that they are not dependent on parental authorization, which may be unattainable due to being estranged from their families. An impactful way that municipal IDs can help improve access for individuals reentering society, particularly those in adult and juvenile justice systems, is by establishing independent ID card programs that benefit various marginalized communities, including homeless youth and LGBTQ individuals. A valid identification card is crucial for individuals reentering society after being involved in the juvenile justice system. A 2015 report by the National Conference of State Legislatures found that LGBTQ plus youth are overrepresented in the juvenile justice system. Municipal IDs provide them a reliable and widely accessible form of identification, enabling them access to essential services to seek employment and reintegrate into their communities more smoothly. The mayor's office of LGBTQ affairs supports the municipal program as it exacerbates the administration's fervent prioritization of youth. Municipal ID laws are crucial in addressing these systematic inequities faced by the LGBTQ plus community. In legal recognition and protection, municipal IDs serve as a valid identification that enable LGBTQ plus individuals access to various essential services. That according to a 2018 report by the National Center for Transgender Equity and Equality, nearly one-third of transgender individuals reported experience in discrimination when presenting identification documents that did not match their gender identity. A 2014 report by the Williams Institute found that LGBTQ plus individuals are more likely to experience poverty than LGBTQ plus individuals, than non-LGBTQ plus individuals. Making access to social welfare programs, legal protections, and other resources critical in addressing disparities in healthcare, employment, housing, and other areas. Having an ID that reflects your authentic identity enhances personal safety and security of LGBTQ plus individuals. A 2019 report by the Human Rights Campaign found that 47% of LGBTQ plus individuals are concerned about the possibility of experiencing LGBTQ plus violence. A municipal ID ensures that individuals recognize and are treated in a manner consistent with their gender identity, reducing harassment or discrimination. Our office supports making sure that law enforcement agencies are a part of the process and that they, that jurisdiction is not a part of the conversation. Municipal IDs also facilitate access to financial services, such as opening banking accounts, securing loans, building credit. And a 2018 report by the National LGBTQ Task Force found that LGBTQ plus individuals experienced higher levels of poverty and financial insecurity than non-LGBTQ plus individuals. So making access to banking services crucial in promoting economic empowerment and reducing financial vulnerabilities. Building partnerships and understanding with these institutions will allow access with the municipal ID builds community, and it welcomes conversations for equity. the municipal ID builds community, and it welcomes conversations for equity. Furthermore, many municipalities offer discounts or free access to cultural institutions, recreational facilities, and events for residents with a municipal ID. That according to a 2018 and a 2021 report by the Williams Institute and Movement Advancement Project, respectively, LGBTQ plus individuals face higher levels of social isolation and less likely to feel a sense of belonging in their communities. Making access to cultural and recreational opportunities essential in enhancing their ability to participate in community activities and enjoy local amenities. Moreover, a municipal ID program recognizes and respects the diverse identities within the LGBTQ plus community, and it promotes a greater sense of inclusion and belonging. Recognition from their municipality can encourage community members to actively engage in unlimited discounts, cultural activities, local affairs, advocacy, civic participation, and leading to a greater representation and influence in decision-making process. Our office supports having those most affected be a part of the installation process. Our key concerns are access by those with financial barriers and involving those communities mostly affected, that they are a part of building relationships. In conclusion, while a municipal ID alone cannot eliminate all systematic inequities faced by the LGBTQ plus community, it serves as a crucial step towards recognition, inclusion, and access to essential services. Municipal ID laws can contribute to creating a more inclusive and equitable society by reducing some of the barriers and disadvantages of LGBTQ plus individuals and what they face in their daily lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Director, for your thorough report. I agree with everything in it. So we're going to get to move on to our questions. I think we got, yeah, we did. Every city agency that was assigned a bill, right? Okay. So I'm going to get into my first question, and that is regarding the cost of implementation. I know that there are three phases. We know that this bill was passed in 2016, so we're looking to see what is the cost. Has Omicron or Access 411, who was that original partner that the city was going to work with, had they submitted any type of cost estimates for what this looks like?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Chris Quinton, Chief of Staff, Mayor's Office of Children, Family Success. So in looking at the cost and looking at what various municipalities have done, it costs like the city of Chicago roughly $5 million in order to stand up their program. City of Philadelphia, they did not disclose the total cost, but just ramping it up, it was about $500,000. So in doing our research, we came to the conclusion that it would be best to do an RFP. That way, we would get information from various vendors on what exactly it would cost to plan, implement, and then post-implementation. And I think the chief procurement officer has additional insight on the scope of that work.
Good morning, Adam Manning, your Chief Procurement Officer from the Department of Finance. We are planning on issuing a request for proposal. We're looking for the best value for the city. As part of that request for proposal process, in our scope of work, we are asking for an assessment of the city program to be done by our business partners. We are also putting in a phased approach based upon when funding becomes available and dollar values. We will ask the proposers on what the cost will be, and as an RFP, of course, it will give us the opportunity then to negotiate those costs to meet our budget. But we really won't have, I don't have a good answer on what the total cost will be until we've actually received the proposals and seen what they're, what they're suggesting based upon our scope of work, which is based upon the ordinance.
Will you all be taking into consideration, is there going to be special language about integration? Because Access 411 already has services with our school system. I believe they have with the MTA and some other services within Baltimore City. So is that going to be a part of that RFP?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Yes, ma'am, of course, to be able to integrate with the various programs that are in city government internally and also externally. If you look at what like the city of Philadelphia and Chicago have done, their ID programs offer many benefits to the users, whereas it not only gives you the availability to use public libraries, but also as like a rebate card if you shop at local shops. It gives you access into not just city buildings, but also partnerships with other buildings as well that might not necessarily, on their own, accept the card, but because of those relationships and partnerships would then do so as well. So we hope for full integration throughout city government and the city of Baltimore.
Okay, I want to get our bill sponsor for our questions.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. What's the timeline in issuing the RFP?
We're currently refining and defining the scope of work. Once the scope of work is complete and it's agreed upon by all the departments, the scope would end, we'd put a requisition into the Workday system. It would go to one of the procurement officers to do. We will fast-track it. We will put it out on the street for anywhere between 30 to 45 days. Once the proposals come back, they come into the Comptroller's Office, which will then publicly open them on every other Wednesday. Procurement will pick them up. Then we have to gather the selection committee, have them review the proposals based upon the scoring mechanisms that we've put in the RFP. I can't give you a timeline on that, ma'am, because if we get one proposal or two proposals, it might take a week. If we get 30, it might take a couple of weeks to go through the proposals and grade them. Once that's complete, the goal is that the top proposals will rise to the top. We would probably want to bring in those top proposers for oral interviews, possibly demonstrations of their systems, rescore, and then enter negotiations, which can take a day, it could take a week, it could take months till before we could put it out. Realistically, if we can get a proposal, an RFP out on the street sometime at the end of this month, December, and everything lines up, we could probably have the program, the initial assessment kicking off by the end of this fiscal year, beginning of next fiscal year. But that would require the planets to align and a lot of resources to be pulled from other places, not just procurement, but all the other departments, to get everything going.
So what I, so the scope of work is basically to help us with the planning phase, then help us with the implementation, potentially, right? Or all three phases?
Yes, ma'am. It's first to tell us what do we know, what do we don't know, and what do we don't know that we don't know about implementing something of this, looking out at, based upon the ordinance, what we want done, how is it meeting the needs of the citizens in the city. The subject matter experts in this field are the people who are putting in the nitty-gritty part. I'm helping with that. We are basing our proposal off of other proposals, so we're not starting from scratch and re-eventing the wheel. And then when that's done, we will issue the proposal, like I said, hopefully within the next several weeks, and get it out on the street, and then have responses in so we can continue the process going.
So I'm going to remind everybody again, the bill passed in 2016. Nothing happened. I don't understand. Then I, then I introduced this resolution, and I was asked, wait, don't have the hearing because we haven't done anything yet. And here we are, a year later, and we're just now getting the RFP out for the planning There are lots of members of our community that are not able to access services because they don't have an ID. The Office of Homeless Services had to contract with the United Way because it was an urgent need to make sure that people experiencing homelessness who have not had access to their documents and their birth certificate and their social security card, work with them to be able to get an ID. So their IDs are United Way IDs. They are not Baltimore City IDs, right? So excuse us for being a little, oh, I'll just speak for myself, excuse me for being a little frustrated that we're, we're, we pass a bill in 2016, and here it is, you know, eight years later almost, that we haven't implemented this. And so obviously, we've been through a lot of transition around that time. We had COVID. We can do all the excuses that we want, but it's really essential that this happen. And you'll be hearing from people who obviously have been affected by the fact that we don't have this program. So I'm very hopeful that procurement can defeat its reputation of being extremely slow in getting stuff done to be able to do this and many other things that I think we all want procurement, procurement to do. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll yield to my colleagues.
Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the sponsor. I just have, I'm confused, I'm not going to lie. So, and here's my question. So this is something that's been assigned to BISIT since 2016, and we still don't have everything in place. So I just want to know, with BISIT, was there a staff change? I'm just utterly confused why the agencies in charge of technology hasn't moved this forward, because this is a technology thing. This is a conversation between agnostic code to talk to other systems about gathering information. This is working with the school district to get around FERPA, to get access to students' records. This is working with the state, our state partners. We now have a state partner who happens to be a Democrat, who will probably give us access to things at MVA if we ask for it. So I'm just curious, why haven't we moved just for the data portion yet, right? Because everything that you're, we're going to need to build this system is going to be required upon what access we already have to data. So even as I think about it now is, I just want to know, and this is a committee request from BISIT, what have they been doing since 2016 in terms of like activating and planning for this? Because it doesn't sound like there was a plan.
So Director Carter, BISIT, I started in 2019, and when I started, my second day on the job was ransomware. And from there, we went from ransomware right into COVID. And so the last several years, what BISIT has been doing has been focused on, one, recovering from both of those catastrophes, two, making sure that we secure our systems, recruit and retrain employees so that they can not only maintain the infrastructure, but build systems in a, in a very specific manner. So this particular bill, I would slightly disagree with you that this is not just a technology bill. This bill is about process. It's about agreements with organizations. It's about certainly integrating systems, but those systems are typically integrated with standard, what we call APIs, in doing so. And so we've looked at the, the ordinance, we've looked at the RFP, but the business, we deferred this to the OPI and MOCFS because this bill needs a true business owner, a business owner that can really work with other organizations to make the agreements. The technology piece is something that will be worked out and needs to be worked out, but the driver of that are those, again, agreements between banks and, and, and the city, or libraries, or buildings, et cetera. So that's what has been happening over the last several years. I don't know if that answers your question. I can't speak to what happened from 2016 to 2019, but since, you know, I've been on the, in this role, that's what we focused on.
That does not answer my question. We, we hear each other. I'll put it like this, right? When I'm, I didn't want to go in too deep, too deep in detail, but there were moments where there could have been agreements in place, right? We could have had a standing MOU with city schools years ago about getting access to student data through FERPA, right? Because we can have that access. There's also access that we can have for immigrant families through MUNET that we could have had access to. There are ways that we could have got around and worked around and get the data to understand the totality of what the technological ask would be in terms of putting out a RFP because what data is already available to us. Just speaking to the fact that we had to pay the United Way to do something so basic for homeless services when, granted, that's a different conversation to have with MOHS about social workers who can actually do that work instead of going out with a nonprofit partner. But as the agency in charge of our data systems, your job is to make sure that if we do receive information, if the information is able to be agreed, brought over into our systems, right? And this is the same issues that I've had with this, with government in terms of just bringing in basic things with Workday, junk in, junk out, because we had no data compliance, right? That's BISIT's job, right? There doesn't have to be an actual data owner or a business rules, right? You got, your guys' job is to consult with the agencies about what the business rules are and implement. I'm just seeing a, a lack of efficacy to get the job done. Because at the end of the day, the, the business owners that you want to have over it, they may have access to the relationships, but at the end of the day, it's still going to come down to your staff to technically say what things that you need to integrate into our systems, create a system, right? So I'm just wondering, and I think this is a broader question, Nina, about, given the urgency of where we are, and I think ransomware happened, COVID happened, I mean, COVID only destroyed things because of bandwidth. I'm just being transparent. Bandwidth in terms of technology, in terms of virtual meetings. So we just want to go in-depth about that, but like, I think we need to have a broader conversation about moving BISIT in terms of leadership, in terms of being more aware of the fact that like, there's an urgency to this issue. So my request is to look at, one, most recently between, since I'm not going to hold you accountable for 16 to 19, I want to know what plans have been in place since 2019 in terms of the actual implementation. And I just want to make sure Hillary understands, this is a formal NPIA request, so I would like to see email exchanges, meeting requests, all those things, things that we've done, any conversations we've had with potential vendors, any type of solicitations we've done. I think that will help us understand really where the efficacy was from agencies at that time, and whether it was a priority. With that, I yield back to the chair.
Madam Chair, I just want to have a clarification on one point, if I may. Thank you. The way that it's written in the 2016 bill is not that agencies would store data. The idea was that residents would apply for their card, somebody would look at whatever document is, is received based on what says in the law, and those would be verified, the person would get a card, the data then gets deleted. And the reason is because there are, we did not want that data to get in the wrong hands for people who are at risk of deportation. We did not want the data to be in the wrong hands for, you know, some of the privacy issues that the LGBT Office talked about. So I think the issue, given, actually, given that, it is a much simpler program than I think we're trying to deal with here. We are not trying to collect data. We're trying to put a program together for people to apply for a card. A card that has our logo on it that says this is a person who resides in the city, and this is their ID. So I just wanted to clarify that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I want to get into some questions to make sure that we're actually thinking ahead about this item. Mima had one of the, the best reports about what should be done, how, how can we engage community? Before, before I even get there, I want to know, is there a funding source that, that has been identified for how we're going to pay, for how we're going to pay for this?
There were some initial planning dollars that were set aside to take care of the work that Adam was referencing. The ongoing costs for administering the program would need to, would be subject to a future budget and would be based off of the, the parameters of what comes out of the planning process.
It was stated that some cities took up to five years from their day one of planning. We all get, I know that we all get in this room that this is urgent, that we need this for our most vulnerable populations, for all of our residents who need an ID. What is the realistic timeline, where we're not just moving at a snail's pace, but we need to get this done? What is a realistic timeline for our city? It's not five years.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. No, I, I don't think it would take that long, but I do think that it is a very large program. And I think that because of some of the intricacies in terms of being able to authenticate like vital documents that people present to us, like whether it's a passport or their driver's license, at this juncture, we just don't have those capabilities. But in looking at it broader, none of the other municipalities did as well. did as well. They went with an outside, third-party vendor in order to get that expertise to actually build the software, the actual thing, and then also to, Councilwoman Ramos' point, to actually print the actual card. So, I think in the three distinct phases that the other municipalities set forth, which is planning, implementation, and post-implementation, I think we are on track for the planning phase. And then from that proposal, we'll then have a better idea of the time span to get to the next part, which is implementation.
What is the, what is the estimated percentage of folks that we think may participate in this program? Because I'm assuming you guys have been planning, but somebody's been talking about this since the bill came through. So, what's the estimate of residents that would likely apply for this program?
I think it varies. So, in like, the city of Chicago, in their first year, I think they processed around like 100,000 ID cards. But I think, you know, they're a much larger city than we are. But I think in terms of the proposal phase, I think it is indeed making sure that we make this program accessible, one, to everybody, and then do our due diligence in terms of communication to let them know that these, this program, this card is available. That's why we have all the stakeholders here to do that type of work.
Is community included within these meetings? And as the Chair of Baltimore City's Domestic Violence Coordinating Council, I'm talking about our domestic violence survivors there, are our homeless population, is there youth, are our youth who are experiencing homelessness, do they have an advocate, or do they have somebody on this roundtable? Do we, do we have our undocumented residents? Are they there, somebody speaking for them? It's so many vulnerable populations.
Yes, ma'am. So, not at this juncture, but I think at the implementation phase, we will, looking at what the city of Chicago put together, it was a wide swath of not just municipal agencies, but also the business community, and then nonprofits as well, that all worked together to formulate, or in the planning phases, or the implementation phase, rather, of their program to make sure that, you know, everyone was aware of the benefits of the program. And I also think that one of the reasons why MOCFS is working so diligently on this, we have our five CAP centers, who day in and day out, we work with some of the most vulnerable members of our community. So, I think, you know, it bodes well for us to be able to provide that ID to the same constituencies that we see every single day.
I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm getting at is that I feel like multiple things, and maybe it is happening, but I feel like multiple things can be done within this planning phase to save time. So, community planning, communications plan, to make sure that we do have the language, access identifying, fully identifying why folks need these unbanked residents, knowing that this ID is also an economic benefit for the city, for our residents to have these IDs. But how are we going to save, are you guys working right now on saving time to work on all of these pieces of this at one time? Now?
I'm sorry. So, what I will say is that MOCFS has been working diligently, and when I say MOCFS, it is myself and Chief of Staff, Chris Quintine, that have been working diligently to pull, to work with the other agencies, to make sure that we are having collaborative conversations. But moving forward, we will make sure that we have a voice. We have also been collecting information from our CAP centers, as constituents are coming in, knowing who does and does not have the appropriate information, to be able to receive those resources, also working very closely with Baltimore City Public Schools, hearing from those staff when they come in, who's unable to enroll their children, because they don't have that information as well, which we know. Also, working with MONC, as you talked about domestic violence, and even as families have to flee from their homes with whatever they can take. So, being mindful of that as well. And so, we have been working diligently, again, with the planning phase, the research, and then moving, part of the planning phase is to make sure that we have all voices, and making sure we're being inclusive, to see if there's anything that we're missing when we're pulling this together, as well as looking at what additional staff we need as we set up a communication plan, to make sure that we have everyone, have included everyone, to make sure that when we're actually developing the card, we know that we have all the pieces for everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks. And then also, I think, keeping in the same line of thought, that other municipalities, they have offices, million-dollar offices, literally designated just for this type of work, where they have, you know, a director and four or five FTEs solely dedicated with, you know, verifying the information that was provided to actually issue the ID, and then actually issuing the IDs. So, it is a large-scale operation.
Director Kearney is not here, but has anyone looked to see, because we all talking about vulnerable populations, this does have a direct tie as well to COVID-19. Have we explored, because we still have ARPA funding left, have we explored if there is some type of way that ARPA funding can be used for some of this?
I'm not certain what involvement the ARPA team has had regarding this particular program. I'd be happy to take that question back to Director Kearney, so that she could circle back and provide a response regarding the feasibility. I would say, you know, at best, at best, based off of the availability of ARPA funds, it would probably only be appropriate to utilize those dollars for the planning piece, knowing where we are against some of the ARPA spend-down timelines. And I think also understanding that these will be recurring costs that we'll want to plan for in the budget. I think, you know, ultimately, we have to sort of know how we wanna scale this up, and kind of how we wanna staff it on an ongoing basis, so that we can make sure we're funding it. You know, we've prepared for that in the budget, to fund it consistently, you know, year after year.
Director Lawson, I appreciate your response for the, for my, for Director Thimless. What I'm getting at is that I wanna make sure that we are moving the ball as fast as we can. If, say our, say Mema needs additional people to put together these communication plans, and we need that done as soon as possible, just that the city is exploring everything. So, that would be a committee request. Can ARPA funding be used for any of this? And keep in mind, because we did, we were funding people for other agencies, with offer money, temporary contracts, all types of, types of things like this. How can we help to get this program through, and how can we use every resourcing tool to get it done? I'm gonna get back to our bill sponsor for any, for any questions that she has at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The bill is pretty clear about the types of documentation that the office, or however we're doing this, would, would accept. And it's pretty in-depth and very well-thought-out in terms of, you know, not everybody has a driver's license, so they have alternatives such as, you know, a foreign driver's license, you know, somebody came from another country, and they have their license from before, that that could also be used. So, I think it's pretty extensive, but I would imagine that the RFP and the planning process would look to see if there's more that could be accepted in terms of these documents, and that either we change the code, or it's added into the regulations. Is that part as well of the planning process?
I would think so, to a certain extent, in that our RFP process is based on the best practices that we've seen with other municipalities. So, it is taking a look at what they've done as well.
And so, again, we're hoping that we can get, either this committee or the council as a whole, we need to be kept abreast of how everything is moving forward. So, we'll need, and this will be a committee request, whether or not we have a hearing or not, is up to Madam Chair, but it's also just, we need at least monthly updates on, in writing, in reporting, from the mayor's office and MOCFS as to where we are in this process, so that we can keep tabs and make sure that we're also letting our community members know the opportunities as well. And then also, again, using us as a resource, as a partnership in terms of getting the word out, whether you need to have focus groups, what, you know, what the needs are, et cetera, because, you know, we're, you're obviously hearing the urgency in my colleagues' questions, that this is, you know, extremely important. So, I would appreciate those monthly updates, similar to what we get from the ARPA office, to be able to do that. Madam Chair, Mema has a question.
I just wanna piggyback on what MOCFS has said. We have been a part of the discussions of implementation, and can provide technical assistance on documentation, especially when it comes to immigrant communities, from a local perspective, in terms of the communities that live in Baltimore, and the alternative documentation that has worked in some of the programs that we have implemented. So, we're here to assist MOCFS, and BSIT, and everyone in this project, and obviously make sure that members of the community are involved in the process as well.
I also think that's a great point, in to bring a group together that's consistently meeting about this. And so, I would wanna see that in your report as well. Thank you.
You have the floor, Councilwoman Torrance.
Yeah, this is my last question. Have we looked into technical support from city schools, as well as our universities? They, one, the access point in company that they all use happens to be OneCard, because at one time, if you can, and I can, and I can say this after becoming a faculty member, I could pull up my old ID picture, they still have access to things I provided to both Towson University and the University of Baltimore, which were copies provided to them that they could have provided for someone else. Because other states are using this system to pull it, it's the reason why we have CLER. CLER can actually have access to that data, and they transfer that data over just off the point of someone providing their social security number, and they can verify through, in person, through an identification, that you do look exactly like your previous picture, to make sure that it is you, right? So, I just wanna think that we're thinking out of a box and reaching out to people who've done this technically, because if we're temporarily just housing information, then maybe we need to have a partnership with someone who has tempor, has that access, and we just need to make sure they verify it.
Yes, sir. So, we did speak with Access 411, as well as Omicron Technologies, who's implemented this program for San Francisco, Chicago, and Philadelphia. I think, and speaking of Access 411, I think they provide a great program, but it's relegated to a specific subset of the population that is going to city schools, whereas this program is, I mean, for like 500,000 people. So, but I do think that there will be integration across city government to access whatever data is available.
We're going to move on to public testimony. As a reminder, if you're in the council chamber, and you would like to testify, we're just asking that you please sign in and check the appropriate box on the sign-in sheet. If you have joined us through WebEx, you will also have the opportunity to testify. Just please use the raise hand function to let us know. We are going to start with testimony within the chambers. The first sign-up that I have, I believe this is Renee Lau.
Good afternoon. I'm Renee Lau. I'm Executive Director of Baltimore Safe Havens, Senior in Disabled Housing. And like many of you, sort of baffled as to why this has taken so long. Especially now. It is more prevalent now, since we have become a sanctuary state for transgender people than ever. We have people coming into this state, coming into our program, who have been victims of human sex trafficking, spouse abuse, and the confidentiality, as was talked about, is essential. But in the same token, these people need services. And the economic impact, if you look at the overall of the personnel hours that are being put into talk to these individuals who come into offices and are seeking services, far outweighs what it costs to give this person an ID. It has taken almost eight years to get to this point. That hurts my sense of judgment, of common sense, of logic. This is Baltimore City. We have so many potential, so much potential here. And we have so many resources here, and we're wasting the resources to look for resources. Think of how it's going to help nonprofit agencies like Baltimore Safe Haven, or any of the other city agencies. The time factor involved, and again, I go back to that cost, that personnel cost, of what's gonna be saved in personnel hours, not only with city agencies, but with agencies such as myself. I have to sign a case manager to a client, that takes them a week, sometimes a month, just to get documentation, to get this person medical care, to get this person housing. I can't get a voucher for this person if they don't have, they don't have an ID. But we got five houses in Baltimore Safe Haven just slammed full of people waiting for services. And our agencies like ourselves are getting that demand more and more every day. And a prime example is June. Once we became a sanctuary state in June, right, the request for housing on Baltimore Safe Haven alone went from 600 to 1,600 by the end of the month. We got 25 beds. And this ID program needs to be implemented as soon as possible. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Colau, Cindy Colaus? Colau, okay. And please state your first and your last name for the record, and you would have three minutes. Hold on, we're gonna... Whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Cindy Colade, and I am, I work with Casa of Maryland, and I am here to ask for the implementation of the municipal ID, of course, because it will be definitely a great help to our growing community. As we know, Baltimore City is a sanctuary community, and every single day, we do receive a lot of new immigrants in our community. And I am here representing the immigrants' community. And I just wanna make sure that the municipal ID will be implemented very fast, because we see a lot of people that come in sometime, that they lost their, they lost their identification at the borders, or anywhere within their travel, they lost it, and they don't have anything. So, I wanna make sure that we are able to give it to them, because even though, for example, at Casa of Maryland, we do have our membership ID, that is a lot of help here in the city of Baltimore. But there is a lot of other things that they cannot apply, that cannot use their ID for. So, the municipal ID of Baltimore City with the logo of Baltimore City will be a great help. One of the example of the things that they cannot do, even, even though they are, even though they are here undocumented or anything, they, they are able to pay their taxes. So, they wanna pay their taxes to the city of Baltimore, to the, to the whole state of Maryland. But this is one, the Casa ID cannot help them with that. So, even though they are here, they wanna be able to be part of the community, and this will be a big help, especially as it's keep on growing, and it's not gonna stop. We're gonna see a lot of growth. We wanna make sure that they have something to first walk... We want to make sure that they have something to first walk around with it, because a lot of them do not want to walk around without any ID or just with that passport, because a passport is very important, so they want to probably keep it at home, and they want to make sure that they have something, that say that they live in Baltimore City, that they are part of this community, that they're, that, so if anything happens on the streets of Baltimore, they know where they came from, they know where they live, and then they have something to say, "I am here, I've been here, I live here, I also work here, I do a lot of things here," and with that ID, it would definitely be a great help. So thank you.
Thank you. Edwin Abrego. Good afternoon.
Gracias a la concejala Ramos por introducir este proyecto de ley.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos, for introducing this bill.
Mi nombre es Edwin Alexis Abrego. Soy de Honduras. Tengo cuatro años de vivir aquí en la ciudad de Baltimore. También para hablar, verdad, estoy aquí para hablar del beneficio, verdad, de, del ID.
So my name is Edwin Abrego. I'm from Honduras. I've lived in Baltimore City for four years, and I'm here to speak about the benefit of this city ID.
Sí, este, también venía a hablarles del, del proyecto de la de, de los taxes. Quería hacer taxes del 2022, este, y no he podido, verdad, porque me ha faltado el ID.
So he came to Casa to receive our tax services. He completed his taxes for the year 2022, but he's unable to create the account without an ID.
También quiero, verdad, tengo una deuda ahí con la ya red, y sí necesito pagarla, pero el monto que me ha mandado, yo no la puedo pagar así de un solo, porque no he tenido trabajo, y sí me gustaría pagárla por partes, así si me dieran, verdad, la oportunidad de pagarlas por partes.
Okay. So within being able to create an account with the IRS, he would then also be able to pay his debt in payments instead of just paying it all at one time, which is currently difficult for him because he is without job.
Sí, entonces, verdad, este, gracias, verdad, de darle el beneficio y lo que nos ha dado, verdad, este, Casa Maryland, que nos ha apoyado, nos ha beneficiado mucho, verdad, en el apoyo de eso, de ayudarlos en, en esto, de conseguir lo que son los taxes.
He's very appreciative of the support that he's received from Casa Maryland with being able to complete his taxes, and then within two years of completing his taxes, he will be able to take out a driver's license.
Así es que yo le doy gracias a todos, verdad, lo de la audiencia, y que también, verdad, este, que sea Dios quien nos bendiga.
He's thankful to everyone here in the chamber and that God blesses you all.
Gracias.
So that was the last person that I had within the chambers. Was there anyone else who did not get to sign the sign-in sheet but wants to testify? Okay, so we're going to move on to our WebEx to see if we have any hands currently raised. Alyssa Kaplan.
My name is Alyssa Kaplan. I serve as a pastor at Breath of God Lutheran Church in Highland Town, and I'm speaking in favor of Councilwoman Ramos's resolution and speaking to demand that our city proceed with urgency in moving this legislation forward to implementation. So as a pastor serving an incredibly diverse community, I have the opportunity to get to know and accompany individuals in all stages of life and experience. I want to tell you about one of those individuals, a young man named Romeo, who was a vibrant part of our community. He was a proud southeast Baltimore native and a well-known figure in our neighborhood, often seen biking around and helping others with their bike. As one of his pastors, I walked with Romeo as he wrestled with addiction and food insecurity, housing insecurity, and struggled with really difficult family dynamics and even at times abuse. For the better part of nine months, I worked with Romeo to try to get the necessary documents for him to get a state ID, with hopes that he would then be able to look for work and access city and state services, and even finally have access to the SSI funds that he was entitled to receive. All of these things would have granted him the physical and emotional stability and support that he really needed at that time in his life. For months, we waited through the impossible bureaucracy together, taking one step forward and then two steps back as we looked for copies of birth certificates and tried to prove residence and get access to a social security card, on and on and on. The process was as dehumanizing and disempowering for Romeo as it was frustrating for all of us who loved and cared for him. It was, in my opinion, yet another failure of the city that he loved to love him back in a meaningful way. Romeo passed away last year at 21, after many long years of struggle with addiction and homelessness. I don't know how Romeo's story could have been different if he had had access to a municipal ID, but I can imagine that it would have lessened his load, it would have provided a moment of reprieve, and it would have enabled him to access services and communities that could have empowered him in life-affirming ways. I urge our city council and city departments to wholeheartedly pursue the development of a Baltimore City municipal ID, a legislative aim that has been languishing in these chambers for seven years. Find the money, work together between departments, and make this happen, so that each individual in our community be there, be they, a proud Baltimore native like Romeo, or some of our newest immigrant neighbors who are earnestly seeking to make Baltimore their home and feel welcomed and empowered to build a vibrant life in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Beth Moran.
My name is Mary Beth Moran, and I'm the Executive Director and founder of Identity Access Project here in Baltimore, Maryland. We have a mission to remove the barrier of ID, exactly what we're talking about today, to provide opportunities to those in need. There are, this is a national crisis, and I'm excited and proud that Baltimore is participating in the municipal ID. Thank you, Councilman Odette Ramos. I know we talk a lot about this issue. And so, across the US, there are 26 million people who do not have a photo ID. Fifty percent of people without, fifty percent of people experiencing homelessness do not have an ID. There's a lack of attention across the US. There's only five of us in this nonprofit space who solely focus on this work, and it's extremely time-consuming complex, as you just heard from Alyssa from Highland Town. There's often a catch-22 scenario when you birth certificate, ID, you need ID to get a birth certificate, and you need ID to get a social security card. The MVA has said that we have until May 2025, and then it's only real IDs. For that, you need a birth certificate, a social security card, and two pieces of mail or homeless verification form. Where does this leave our Baltimore City residents who are vulnerable? This is where IEP plugs in. We are the only one-stop shop here in Maryland that solely focuses on identifying documents. We're a 50-state position, meaning we're the only place in Maryland where you can get an out-of-state birth certificate. We're not naive to think that all of our Baltimore City residents were born here in Maryland. ME manages complex process for organizations, ultimately giving their staff back time, money, and ultimately, agencies are better able to execute on their mission statement. One of our biggest vendors is the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. The Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, our each team contracts with me, the Identity Access Project, to solve this problem of birth certificates for them. It's in-house, it's in the city. IEP has served over 350 clients in the past six months with Baltimore, with the Identity Access Project. We also house the Old United Way program for these exact Baltimore City client IDs that we're talking about. We contract with Catholic Charities, Thread, Bond Secures, and we're at the Franciscan Center once a week. Once a week, from nine to one, we see on average 30 clients needing vital documents, and we often have to turn clients away. Like Alyssa had said, this problem is personal. It's, it affects over, since January, just this year, January 2023, we have served over 1,000 clients with vital documents, birth certificate, government-issued photo ID. We had a client recently who I just want to share about. This is our normal clientele. This is not an obscure case. He came in and had no vital documents. He had tried on average over nine times to get his vital documents on his own, going to different agencies and organizations, only to be met with, "I can't help you because you don't have the documents to get the right documents." He spent some time in jail because he could not pay his child support. He could not get a job to pay his child support because he didn't have a photo ID. Once coming to us, we were able to get all of his documents within one month. His biggest goal upon receiving his ID was to get a job so he could increase his family stability. We know from our data that having ID reduces homelessness, it reduces recidivism, it increases family stability, and it increases healthcare outcomes. You need ID for all of these things. The biggest populations that we see are people experiencing homelessness, returning citizens, survivors of domestic violence, and lastly, youth aging out of foster care. So I'd encourage you, as you form those committees, to really look at those big four buckets. Having a municipal ID for us is huge. We are already having that workaround with United Way ID, so we already have a process established of how to do this, how to issue it, and we would be open to continuing to spread that information and help be on those, in those meetings to help share what we're already doing and how this is working for us. The biggest thing that we see is if we're a municipal city ID could plug in.
Alyssa, thanks so much for your comment. Would you be able to close out? Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mary Beth, thanks for your comment. Would you be able to close out at this time, please?
Absolutely. The municipal city ID would allow us to serve more vulnerable populations and ultimately allow us to see those outcomes of reducing homelessness, reducing recidivism, and increasing family stability. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I don't see any additional hands that are raised within the WebEx platform, so that is going to conclude our public testimony for today. I do want to thank everyone for joining us. The committee is going to schedule additional meetings in the future to keep up to date on this bill and continue this important discussion. This hearing is now in recess. Thank you.